Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of November 2nd, 2022. Today, we had the pleasure of hosting the 66th Annual Teen Government Day. Joining us are some of the Kern High School students who participated today in this day of learning and this day of sharing about local government. During roll call, each council member will take a moment to introduce a student. Each student will then share a short biography with us. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here. And today with me is Greta Gonzalez of West High School.
So, like Mayor Go said, my name is Greta Gonzalez. I am a senior at West High School. I am the president of journalism at my school, the chairperson for the school site council, and the first student representative on the Tier One team. I typically spend my free time with my older siblings, my parents, or my two cats, Ronnie and Cash. If I'm not with them, then I'm probably watching a musical or reading. I plan to attend Bakersfield College and Fresno State University to study forensic behavioral science and eventually become a criminal psychologist. I'm extremely passionate about mental health, and it is my goal to help make the world a kinder and safer place for everyone. Thank you.
Welcome, Greta. Our new mayor.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Okay. I'm Janessa Grissom. I am from Ridgeview High School. I'm a senior. My college goal is to attend UC Irvine and pursue business. I'm the senior class president, and I'm also in virtual enterprise when I'm not doing any school activity, which takes up most of my time. I love being with friends, and I love dancing. And yeah, that's pretty much about me. Thank you.
Councilmember Arias. Well, he's not here, but... Oh, here he is. Okay.
Hello. My name is Sophia Trong, and I attend Stockdale High School. I am Stockdale's ASB Vice President. I am involved in the National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, and Spanish Honor Societies at my school. I'm also involved in academic decathlon, and I'm also involved in PLCW Biomedicine. In the future, I hope to earn a BS in Biology at a four-year university and then go to medical school to become a sports medicine physician, where I hope that I can impact people's lives through improving healthcare by focusing on preventative and informative care. Outside of school, I'm really passionate about philanthropy and giving back to the community. One of the proudest things I've done is my involvement in the UNICEF Club, where we were ranked second in the nation and raised over $11,000 in a single donation to help mitigate the effects of COVID-19 in India.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here. Hi, everyone. I'm Maya Fulmer. I'm from Bakersfield High School, and I'm going to be majoring in cognitive science in order to prepare myself for my career. I don't know specifically what job I want to pursue yet, however, I do know that I want to improve people's lives. With a GPA of 4.23, some awards I've received have been being crowned Miss VHS, organizing and also representing my school and winning the Mayor's Great American Cleanup High School Challenge Award, as well as my Virtual Enterprise Department Human Resources placing number one in the state of California for our employee newsletter, and top 32 in the United States for our 20-page employee handbook, oral presentation, and speech. Along with this, I was announced as girls tennis captain, and also our tennis team won the Linnick Cup a couple months ago. Some school activities I participate in is Asian Culture Club, being the founder and president for the past three years, Ecology Club president for two years, Fashion Club president two years, Virtual Enterprise HR Director two years, Girls Tennis two years, ASB President this past year, ASB Commissioner of Community Service last year, National Honor Society President last year, Virtual Enterprise Analyst my sophomore year, FFA Chapter Treasurer sophomore year, and then FFA Greenhand Vice President my freshman year. Along with this, I participate in Society of Women Engineers and Friday Night Live. Some of my hobbies include fashion, just because I have an interest with it, especially with sewing. And then, when I'm not pursuing... When I'm not sewing, I'm hanging out with my friends. Some community service activities I have been a part of is being the Student Board Member for Children First, a nonprofit that hosts monthly food distributions and neighborhood cleanups. Along with this, over the summer, I interned for them to help organize a free two-week summer literacy program for students. Along with this, I'm the chairman for JJ's Legacy's Got the Dot High School Leadership Program, where I lead a group of eight high school representatives in organizing their own schools' participation in our district-wide walkathon. Over the summer, I also interned for a cap case executive board and volunteer with them biweekly... Or bi-monthly.
Councilmember Smith.
We are here. Hello, everyone. My name is Hania Garcia, and I attend South High School. My college goals for the future is to apply and hopefully make it into San Luis Obispo as a major in architecture. I have a 4.5 GPA. I'm a part of NHS, CSF, and have gotten principal lists all my four years. And some school activities I just am very proud of are being a part of orchestra, robotics, and the MS Cube Academy at my school, which focuses on getting students to STEM majors. Whenever I'm not focused on these activities, I just kind of like playing instruments like the bass or the piano, violin, and things like that, or just reading books around. I've also done some community service acts, like the Kern River Cleanup, and have also written letters to first responders to show that we care. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
We're present. My name is Justin Hernandez. I am the ASB President at East Bakersfield High School, and I am currently involved in CSF, National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, the Fishing Club, as well as varsity tennis and swim. I currently have a 4.5 GPA, and after high school, I hope to attend a four-year university where I plan to go into event planning. Outside of school, I love to bake, and I am a part of a program called Foraging Builders, where we learn about service over self.
Councilmember Gray.
We are present. Hi, I am Aliera Sandez. I am the ASB President at Highland High School. At Highland, I'm also the varsity cheer captain, the Secretary of National Honor Society, a member of the American Red Cross, and a member of the Spanish Honor Society. I maintain a 4.5 GPA and have received National Recognition of Hispanic Honors from College Board. Outside of school, I enjoy participating in city serve outreaches and helping the community through Canyon Hills Church. One of my proudest community service achievements is being on the Executive Board of the Juniorettes of the Women's Club of Bakersfield. It's the first ever in our county. Outside of school and in my free time, I play the piano, violin, and ukulele, as well as enjoying acting and singing. I plan to pursue a career in medicine at a four-year university and eventually go on to become a physician's assistant.
Councilmember Parlier.
We are present. Good evening. My name is Kara Seaver, and I am currently the ASB President at Ridgeview High School. On campus, I am involved in Virtual Enterprise as the Director of Marketing, and I also am involved in the Drama Department, as well as I am the varsity girl swim team captain. Outside of school, I do have a part-time job as well. I plan on attending a four-year university to major in political science. I then plan on pursuing law and going to law school after that.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have some others maybe present with us that would like to introduce themselves? Would you call on them too, please?
City Attorney Gennaro.
My name is Leslie Munoz, and I'm... My name is Leslie Munoz, and I am a senior at South High. I currently have a 4.4 GPA, and I love to be involved with my community. I am senior class vice president, and I am also vice president of my school's National Honor Society. I am also a part of my school's Criminal Justice Academy, and I am also a part of my school's Pet House Club, which is a community service club that donates to our local animal shelter.
City Manager Clegg.
Present. Good evening, everyone. My name is Melanie Tozado. I am a senior at Foothill High School. I currently maintain a 4.5 GPA. My college goal is to attend UCLA or UC San Diego to pursue a career in the medical field. I would like to become a doctor one day. I'm leaning towards surgeon. Some school activities, well, I like to keep myself busy, so I am in ASB. I am Commissioner of Campus Culture and School Events. I am also in other clubs such as Lean Crew, and I am also in many community service clubs. I volunteer at the Adventist Health Hospital, and I recently opened a medical club at my school. Since we don't really have much medical club, I wanted to impact all those students that would like to pursue a career. Some hobbies and interests, I like going to the library downtown. I love reading there and studying. But that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Planning Director Johnson.
Here. My name is Aviana Borba, and I'm ASB President at Garcia's High School. I have a 4.85 GPA and plan on pursuing a career in pediatric oncology after studying biology at the University of Duke. I am captain of the cheer team, and I am on the competitive dance team at my school. I am president of the Helping Hands Club, where we make sack lunches for the homeless every month, and I am also the Secretary of National Honor Society.
Public Works Director Strakalous.
Here. Hi, everyone. My name is Maxine Renase. I'm a senior at North High School. I plan to go to Bakersfield College to get my RN degree and then go to CSUB to get my BSN to hope to become a travel nurse. I currently have a 4.22 GPA. I am ASB Vice President, Kern Inyo FFA Sectional Treasurer, North FFA Chapter Secretary, and the founder and president of the Culinary Club at North High. I'm also part of the Got the Dot Leadership Program along with Maya at JJ's Legacy, where we educate our communities about the importance of organ, tissue, and eye donation, where we will also be holding a Got the Dot Walkathon happening in March 2023. When not participating in school activities, I play club volleyball at Central Valley Starlings and sometimes really enjoy a game of golf. Thank you.
Incredible. I just feel like our future... Oh, we have one more. Here we go. Hiding down there, but not forgotten.
Everyone, my name's Angela Williams, and I'm the ASB Business Manager at Ridgeview High School. I plan on attending a four-year university and pursuing neurology. I really want to be a neurologist. I have a 4.4 GPA, and I am in the marching band and on varsity volleyball at my school. I am also the president of Medical Club, Asian Community Club, Math Honor Society, and National Honor Society. I also hold a number of positions on my other club boards, and I love to crochet in my free time. I just started learning, so I founded the crochet club at my school. I also volunteer at Adventist Health on Sundays, so as the hospital. And that's it. Thank you.
And our two city managers.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wright, and I go to Centennial High School. I plan to attend a four-year university to major in business and minor in political science, and I hope to one day become a lawyer. I have a 4.2 GPA and have completed a year's worth of credits at Bakersfield College. I am also a part of the California Scholarship Federation. I have been ASB President all four years and am also involved in National Honor Society, Lean Crew, Chamber Choir, Advanced Drama, and Fellowship of Christian Athletes. My hobbies include theater, singing, golf, and helping in my community. I am president of a community service club called Life in a Bag, and I have volunteered with Garden Pathways, League of Dreams, Valley Baptist, and many other organizations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Chen. I'm a senior at Stockdale High School, and I'm also the ASB President. I am the NHS President as well, and Stockdale's NAMI Club President. I'm the varsity golf captain and pack rooms vice president. I'm also involved in a lot of music and clubs on campus. I'm the band president and have been for the past two years, and I'm also involved in my school's marching band, wind symphony, symphony orchestra, and jazz band. I've also been a part of the Kern County Orchestra for all four years in high school, serving as... Playing as a principal chair. And I've also been a part of the Bakersfield U Symphony Orchestra. Some clubs I'm involved in are Pack Room, International Club, Red Cross Chess Club, UNICEF, NHS, Math Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Math Club, Science Club, Interact Club, and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Thank you.
And we have one more.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Perciago. I am a senior at Independence High and a recipient of the Glendon Rogers Award. At Independence, I am the president and founder of the Women's Empowerment Club, captain of the color guard team, a violinist in the school orchestra. I also serve as an ASB Commissioner of Clubs and Community Service, Secretary of Latino Student Union and Spanish Honor Society, as well as an Ambassador for Science National Honor Society. I am also a member of the United Nations Club and National Honor Society. Outside of school, I have participated in the Adventist Health Junior Volunteer Program and the UCLA Summer College Immersion Program. In the future, I plan to study medicine at Stanford University or UCLA and become a leading neurosurgeon in the medical field. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And don't you feel like our future is in amazing hands in Bakersfield, California? What wonderful students. Thank you all for participating. I feel like we need to say like, hello, my name is Blank, and I've solved world peace and brought about that and ended world hunger. Amazing. Thank you so much. We are so proud of you and just so pleased that you're here today. Let's give them a hand. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Jeff Chandler, who's a senior pastor at First Presbyterian Church, offer the invocation. Pastor has been so involved in our community, really grateful for that. Following the invocation, Samuel Galligan, who is a junior at Centennial High School, will lead us in the pledge. He is ranked Eagle Scout under Boy Scout Troop 194. I got to go to his pinning. He is the first and only scout to earn all 139 merit badges available, like all of them. He had to create an extender because he has so many. First one under the Southern Sierra Council, and that is an achievement made by less than one-half of 1% of all scouts. Sam also earned the Triple Crown, the Grand Slam, for attending the High Adventure Basis, and for his Eagle Scout project, Sam constructed an outdoor reading garden with a pergola at Whitley Elementary School. He has a 4-point GPA and is going to go on and take care of world peace. I am very confident of that. Would you all stand and join us for the invocation?
So much intelligence and energy. Thank you, young people, for reminding us of passion and service. Great job. Bow your heads and pray with me. Lord God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the people of our city with all their abilities and interests and gifts, how together we try to make our community better. Thank you for the gift of life, the beauty that surrounds us, and for friendships that sustain us. Thank you for the ability to be involved in meaningful work and for the honor of bearing responsibilities. Thank you for all who participate in the civic process, young and old alike, who seek to influence decisions that would raise our city to its greatest potential. In the scriptures, you instruct us, citizens, to obey the governing authorities since you have established them, that they might promote peace, order, and justice. In light of your direction, I pray for our mayor, for the council, and for the many city officials. Grant them wisdom to govern well amid the conflicting interests and issues facing our community. Grant them a sense of the true needs of our citizens. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there's genuine disagreement. And grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task of leading. We invite you to enter this place, guide all that happens. For today's agenda, give all of them an assurance of what is right and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. All of these things, we pray in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, Sam. Stay there, and you take over. It is my honor tonight to be able to present you with the Mayor's Medal, just to add to your collection.
So, Sam, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to thank my mother, Jennifer, and my father, Peter. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to make you all aware of the guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during the other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by the resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, or surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item.
Presentations, item 4A. Presentation by Shayla Woods Collins, Human Resources Manager, to winners of the 2022 Excellence in Action Awards, the Extra Mile Award, and STAR Award in recognition of outstanding service to the city of Bakersfield.
Thank you. Ms. Wood, before you begin, I'd ask all those who are standing except our officers to take a seat just for safety reasons. So, we'll just give you a minute, and there are many empty seats here, so please find a seat.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Go, members of the City Council, and those joining us for Teen Government Day. My name is Shayla Collins. I am the Human Resources Manager with the City of Bakersfield. I also serve as co-administrator of the city's Employee Incentive Team. Each year, the Employee Incentive Team recognizes staff and highlights achievements over the past year through Excellence in Action Awards. Today, I am pleased to present the City of Bakersfield 2022 Excellence in Action Program recipients, who were nominated by coworkers or management based on their excellent contributions to our city. All award recipients will be recognized in a commemorative video that will be unveiled following this short introduction. A copy of the video will also be provided to all winners to share with their family and friends. Before the video begins, I would like to recognize the efforts and contributions of staff who nominated their peers for these awards, to the supervisors and department heads for supporting the nominations, the Technology Services Media Team for creating this great video, and to the Employee Incentive Team for their work in reviewing the nominees. Finally, thank you to each city employee for your continued commitment to serving the city of Bakersfield and the public every day and exhibiting the sound of something better. And now, I present to you the 2022 Excellence in Action Award Video.
Welcome to the 2022 Excellence in Action Awards for the City of Bakersfield. We now honor the marvelous employees that used heroic feats and valiant effort. The following champions have improved our city and are assembling a Bakersfield with the sound of something better. Lieutenant Coronado conducted testing and analysis, defined policies and protocols, and executed an implementation strategy that resulted in the adoption of a community-oriented, non-traditional, data-driven policing program called Shot Spatter Connect. This program and its implementation has been incredibly complex, requiring extensive liaising between developers, analysts, vendors, officers, and command staff. Lieutenant Coronado is a quiet professional who uses his intellect, communication skills, extensive experience, and personal compassion to lead and guide our ongoing efforts to partner with our community to protect the lives and property of the people we serve. Toni Crosby, Business Manager, Fire Admin. Toni has been instrumental in helping develop the fire department budget. She has 10 years of institutional knowledge in the fire department and is well aware of the processes and met all deadline submissions. Toni provides leadership to the accounting clerks and assists them with their duties when there is a need. She often helps with payroll and comes in on the weekends to ensure that she can meet whatever deadlines loom. When others need to stay late or work on the weekends, Toni is the first to volunteer her time for the benefit of others. She played a huge role in process mapping the payroll process and identified areas to improve efficiency and remove waste. This was an effort to make payroll less cumbersome and more accurate, not just for internal staff, but for those in finance as well as those receiving checks. Toni is a true team player and lends a hand wherever and whenever she can to help others. Toni truly cares about the city, the department, the community, and her coworkers. Maxwell Dodario, Senior Police Officer, Recruitment Training Officer, Police. Maxwell Dodario has been a Recruit Training Officer, or RTO, for five academy classes. During his tenure as an RTO, he has been part of preparing over 100 police trainees to graduate the academy and become police officers. The position of RTO is an essential and vital function in training people to become police officers. Senior Officer Dodario fulfilled this role exquisitely and set a high standard of a Bakersfield police officer all his trainees could strive to attain. During an audit of the academy by post, numerous trainers repeatedly praised the mentor program. His work exemplifies his dedication and professionalism to the PD and the safety of our community. Misty Eaton, Principal Planner, Economic and Community Development. Misty shows leadership skills in many ways, and she always shows up with a smile on her face. Misty is also always available to assist us with any questions at any time, no matter how busy she is. Misty is truly amazing in our department. She is willing to share and increase her knowledge of city operations to provide high-quality service to the people of Bakersfield. Olympia Frederick, Buyer Two, Finance Purchasing. Olympia has taken more responsibilities in the purchasing division with an explicit desire to build on her institutional knowledge, becoming a key contact to assist departments in the procurement process. Olympia is an important member of the finance team. She takes a positive approach to her assignments, working well with her coworkers in the department and those in other city departments. The work she has done and continues to do in... The work she has done and continues to do in the purchasing division has improved the processes and procedures necessary to be good stewards of taxpayer funds, while at the same time servicing the needs of city departments, allowing those departments to meet their own goals in service to the community. Cassandra Gale, Principal Planner, Development Services. Cassandra has helped mold the community with various projects throughout the city, but her biggest undertaking has been the general plan update. This is a multi-year effort that will affect the city of Bakersfield for decades to come. She manages multiple consultant teams, community outreach meetings, and her own team. She has guided the preparation of five key deliverables: the Habitat Conservation Plan, Municipal Services Review, Climate Action Plan, Housing Element Update, and Comprehensive General Plan Update, while training a worthy, advanced planning team. Toni Hauquez, Associate Planner 2, Development Services, Planning. Toni has shown steady leadership and mentorship with new employees in the department. He has mentored several new planners by example and sharing his institutional knowledge and displaying responsive customer service. Toni mentors new employees, provides responsive customer service to the public and city employees. He is a leader among his coworkers, especially the new employees. He coordinates and communicates across several city departments and public agencies to provide excellent service. Cheyenne Low, Accounting Clerk, Fire Admin. Cheyenne assisted the business manager with budget preparation for the 2122 fiscal year. Chey is always eager to assist anyone in the department with any questions and help troubleshoot various office equipment troubles. She's very friendly with coworkers and customers that come into the office. She still assists customers who call her regarding her previous position for AR billing questions. Chey has received high fives in the past year for all the hard work she's been doing and having a great attitude about it. Chey is one of the hardest workers in the department. She goes above and beyond to do things outside daily duties because she likes to help. She is truly an asset to the department. Chey is a dedicated employee who is reliable, hardworking, and team-oriented. In addition, Chey is respectful and kind in her dealings with internal and external stakeholders. Matthew Perry, Fire Captain, Fire Suppression. Matthew created a program to mentor prospective fire captains and fire battalion chiefs, thereby increasing the probability of a successful transition into supervisory and managerial roles. Captain Perry created a program that challenges the critical thinking and problem-solving skills that are necessary for successful leaders of teams that provide emergency services as part of the city of Bakersfield's commitment to the community. Captain Matthew Perry identified a need to improve on a process and used technology, innovation, and leadership skills to improve the quality of the process and increase the potential success of future team leaders. Captain Perry is a true professional who is well-respected for his leadership, tactics, and strategic thinking. He has taken on the task of mentoring many of the department's future supervisors. Kay McGahey, Fire Department Supervisor, Fire. Kay has been a part of the Critical Incident Stress Management Team for many years. She is vital in helping dispatchers get through some of the worst calls they have ever taken. She organizes debriefings and diffusings to help assist with this. She has used her own time to help dispatchers going through hard times. Kay possesses great leadership skills by example of how much she cares for each person in our center. Her customer service with the citizens of Bakersfield is excellent. She treats every caller and every person with the utmost respect and compassion. Each month, she finds new and creative ways to uplift our center. Kay truly cares about her fellow employees and makes every effort to build morale and Shannon McRedmond, Accountant 1, Public Works Administration. Shannon leads the annual Capital Improvement Project Budget and carryover processes, as well as leading the oversight of Public Works CIP accounting. Shannon is responsible for project setup, project account management, analysis of capital funds for the CIP program, and project classification. In addition, she oversees billing of federal projects to Caltrans. Shannon is highly productive, dedicated, and trustworthy. Judy Peters, Clerk Typist, Development Services, Buildings. Judy Peters has been a clerk typist assigned to the Code Enforcement Unit for over 17 years. In December 2021, Judy assumed full responsibility of the unit's administrative duties for the traditional code enforcement functions and maintained the one-person administrative role for 10 code enforcement officers and two supervisors from January 2022 until July 2022. During this period, she processed over 4,500, screened thousands of additional complaints, and processed 3,981 various types of notices. Judy acted as the clerk for the administrative hearing for 265 cases, and she generated, managed, and retained approximately 95 abatement contracts. Solomon Sackett, Engineering Technician 1, Water Resources. Solomon Sackett led the task conducting stream flow measurements in the South Fork of the Kern River on behalf of the city of Bakersfield and Kern River interest. His measurements were instrumental in ensuring that the water rights of Kern River and the city of Bakersfield were being protected. His consistent measurements helped innovate the pilot agreement by incorporating multiple measurement strategies. He also suggested using a drone to capture flow location, which was ultimately beneficial. His data collection was essential in changing the process of the pilot agreement. His quick thinking and ability to analyze situations led to an early conclusion of the diverted water. This required flexibility, a willingness to investigate, extra time and effort, a cooperative spirit, good communication, and hard work. Janeth Vega, Community Relations Specialist, Police Department, Community Relations Unit. Janeth was assigned to the Metro Zone Neighborhood Watch, which experiences higher rates of violent crime compared to the other five zones of the city. She decided to employ a different approach for the neighbors that were hesitant to host themselves and hosted meetings on the street and not directly in front of one person's home. Prior to each meeting, she knocks and extends a personal invite to each neighbor, letting them know about the meeting. This simple approach allows neighbors to feel a little more confident and also allows the police department the opportunity to make itself readily available to engage and hear directly from residents about the issues they are experiencing. Janeth Vega truly works with a servant's heart and can assess the needs of our community members to develop plans of implementation to help improve their quality of life. Naomi Vidalis, Senior Records Clerk, Police, Special Operations. While assigned as an operations secretary, Naomi was instrumental with organizing, preparing, and inputting data during our division's budget process. Our division was tasked to develop a plan to respond to the unexpected departure of a key person on our budget team. Naomi was able to quickly learn the budget system and organize training to our newly-formed team. These actions enabled our division to reach our budget-specific goals and objectives and critical timelines. Her attention to duty has made our internal process more efficient, which allows us to be more fiscally solvent. She has often sought out for simplifying current methods to improve our working processes. The Shining Team Achievement Recognition, or STAR, Award will be awarded to the Police Deconstruction Team. Deconstruction Team, Police Department, Investigations. The Deconstruction Team was tasked with the digitizing of hard copy homicide books. They worked tirelessly to make sure the information was completely and accurately scanned into the system. The completion of this project will help in the further investigation of cold cases by making the information readily available to the detectives. This project had been discussed conceptually for almost 10 years. This team went above and beyond to dedicate precious resources and time. It is more than a project. It is the stories of our community members and their families who are still seeking justice. The Deconstruction Team is commended for their hard work and dedication to the project. And now, here are a few words from our city manager, Christian Clegg.
Another incredible year. I continue to be amazed by the amount of outstanding work done by our city employees. I share my personal thanks and congratulations to all of our Excellence in Action Award winners and our STAR Award team. As we empower our team and unlock the energy and potential within each individual, I'm seeing more creativity, more solutions, and better interactions with our community. We are getting better together every day. It gives me great pleasure to highlight individuals that are embodying our public service values of collaboration, accountability, resourcefulness, excellence, and stewardship. Congratulations to these individuals for representing us so well and showing that Bakersfield cares. Now comes this year's Extra Mile Award. The Extra Mile Award is recognition from the city manager's office based on outstanding and exceptional job performance. We have seen many go above and beyond, but none more than a pivotal team that is being recognized with our Extra Mile Award. This team has become an example of creating a best practice to address an emerging challenge. Their work has been studied by other cities. They have developed new solutions and continuously analyzed patterns to adjust their approach. They work in close coordination with multiple departments and numerous community partners. They do a very hard job. It requires a variety of skill sets. It is relentless and may feel thankless, but it is critical to addressing one of our most challenging community issues. If the community knew who to thank, they would probably have a fan following. They are in the trenches keeping our community clean every day. This year's Extra Mile Award goes to our Code Rapid Response Team. Over this past year, the Rapid Response Team has cleared 2,563 encampments, completed 1,896 cleanups, and removed more than 8 million pounds of trash. I can't imagine what this city would look like without that team. Thank you for being there for our community. Congratulations.
We have honored many marvelous employees tonight, and we continue to be grateful to all the heroic city employees for their hard work and dedication. Your work serves your city, your community, your friends, and your families. We could not be the sound of something better without you.
Let's give it up for these outstanding city employees. Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamation to Jamie Stewart, Child and Family Services Coordinator for the Kern County Network for Children and the Dream Center, declaring National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Bakersfield during November 2022.
Welcome, Jamie. Council members, did you know it's extremely hard to identify homeless youth despite how common it is? Homeless youth could be standing next to you in line at a store or even a classmate of one of your children. Each year, more than 4.2 million youth across the country experience at least one night of homelessness. Established in 1992, the Kern County Network for Children strives to protect and enrich the lives of these children in Kern County. They identify and address the most critical issues of children in Kern County, including the prevention of child abuse, neglect, and homelessness. And so tonight, it's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas Kern County Superintendent of Schools identified more than 5,500 children who lacked a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence per the McKinney-Vento Act, that's their definition of homelessness. And whereas in addition to losing their homes, many homeless youth will also lose family, friends, a sense of stability and safety, and increase the likelihood of substance abuse, early parenthood, and vulnerability to being trafficked. And whereas local organizations, including the Kern County Network for Children, are working to promote youth well-being and educate the public on potential dangers youth experience while homeless. Now therefore, I, Karen Kago, Mayor of the city of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in our city and urge all citizens to support organizations that provide services and resources to help homeless youth. It's dated at Bakersfield, California, this second day of November 2022. It's my honor to be able to present this proclamation to Jamie Stewart, who is the Child and Family Services Coordinator for the Kern County Network for Children, the Dream Center. Jamie, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Go. And I have Dr. Anna Lavin with me from the -- she's the Executive Director for the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. So I thank all of you for this proclamation and helping us to raise awareness and also for the funds that your city sets aside to ensure that homeless assistance is dedicated to homeless youth as well. But I want to introduce to you Janessa Fisher and Cynthia Lera Martinez. So they are Youth Action Boards, which Youth Action Board is a standing committee of the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. And they're going to talk to you just for a few minutes about what Homeless Youth Awareness Month means and the powerful project that they created, which were those pictures that you saw.
Good afternoon. I am Janessa.
My name's Cynthia Lera Martinez.
We are proud to be representing the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative's Youth Action Board.
The Youth Action Board is a committee that consists of 10 former or current homeless foster youth, and we bridge the gap between homeless youth and supporting agencies by advocating the needs of homeless youth.
November is National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. To help increase local awareness, we created the photojournalism project you're seeing titled Through Our Eyes, because I can tell you over and over again what it sounds like or what it might be to be a homeless youth. But if I show you with pictures and words, it'll be much easier. We created this to help bring awareness for people who don't know what it looks like to be a homeless youth, what it looks like.
There are currently more than 300 homeless youth in Kern County who have been connected to resources, but there are many more that are unaccounted for.
Being a homeless youth is extremely dangerous. Youth have to try to blend in, and there are so many more homeless youth than people realize and see in our community.
The good news is that thanks to your council's support, there are services and resources available. In fact, since 2018, when the Kern County Network for Children's Dream Centers Homeless Youth Services began, 135 youth ages from 18 to 24, and 53 of their young children have been housed, including my three children and myself.
I am also housed through the Dream Center. If people encounter homeless youth, they can help them by calling 211 or the Kern County Network for Children Dream Center. And the mounted pictures are available for display in public places and groups. If anyone is interested, they can call the Kern County Network for Children Dream Center or contact Jamie Stewart.
Thank you so much for helping us increase awareness about homeless youth and for all your support, resources, and services.
I also want to thank really quickly Anna Lavin for continuing to support the Youth Action Board and whatever we choose to do and just kind of being behind us with every project. This means a lot to us as being former homeless youth and fully recovering and kind of giving back and making it a full circle and giving back to our homeless youth who are still out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Public Statements.
As was previously displayed on the television screens in front of you, we have interpreters present for the Spanish and Punjabi languages for those who need interpretation services with the meeting, specifically with item 8A. Please see the interpreters at the City Council Chamber's front doors for more information. And a helpful reminder for those who are presenting and giving comments today, for the benefit of our interpreters, please pace yourselves and speak clearly into the microphone during your comments so the interpreter can clearly translate your message.
In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total, per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item.
Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk who will the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you are here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you are here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not listed on the agenda.
Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on Consent Calendar Hearing Items 8A or 8B, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's meeting agenda?
Mayor Kago, we have not received any speaker cards regarding items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Mayor Kago, we've received one speaker card for items not listed on tonight's agenda.
Go ahead and call those speakers, please, or that speaker.
The first public speaker is Karen King and Cindy Para.
Welcome, Ms. Para.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and all of these rock stars up here today. I am Cindy Para. I am the Golden Empire Transit Board Chair, and we are here tonight. I'm here tonight with my CEO, Karen King. We're going to give an update on some of the great things that have been going on at GET and what's to come. And I think we have an invite of an event that we are proud to invite you all to. I know we only have a little bit of time, but I just wanted to say what a great job Karen and the rest of staff has done through the pandemic, getting the buses on the road every day, dealing with supply chain issues and labor force issues. So with that being said, I will hand it over to Karen.
Thank you, Cindy, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and guests. As Cindy said, I'm Karen King, CEO of Golden Empire Transit District, and just want to update you on a few things. You should have a handout that was brought for you this evening, so I'm not going to read that to you because you obviously can read that on your own. But I did want to let you know that GET is still only operating 2/3 of its normal fixed route service due to a shortage of both drivers and mechanics and technicians. But during the pandemic and this last year, we have really focused on microtransit, which is similar to Uber and Lyft, and does not require a commercial driver's license. We've been more successful in recruiting folks for that service, and I'm proud to let you know that we'll be expanding that service to the entire metropolitan Bakersfield area.
Thank you.
Just on the second page of your handout is an invitation to our ribbon-cutting of our hydrogen fueling station. It's the first in the county.
Thank you so much, Ms. King. Thank you so much, Ms. Para. And I want to thank you especially for providing a hydrogen bus this last week as we were able to tour infrastructure advisor to the Governor, Antonio Villarogosa. We took him all around Bakersfield to our trip project, and thank you so much for providing that hydrogen bus.
You're welcome. It was our pleasure.
Thank you. And now we'll take a very, very short break to allow our Teen Government Day students to return home and prepare for tomorrow's classes so that they can maintain their 5.0 Superstar GPA. So thank you so much. Let's give it up to our teen students. And council members, if you would return to your seats. Okay, council members, let's reconvene. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments Item 6A. Two appointments to the Bakersfield Youth Commission for alternate member for Ward 4, term to expire July 2023, and alternate member for Ward 6, term to expire on July 2024. Two applications for appointment were received, one from Benay Brar for Ward 4 and another one from Cade Nahama for Ward 6.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are required. I'll call on Councilmember Smith for the Ward 4 nomination of the alternate committee member, and then Councilmember Gray for the Ward 6 nomination of her alternate committee member. Councilmember Smith.
I'm happy to nominate Benay Brar.
Thank you. And Councilmember Gray?
Well, I've got a little more to say about this. Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say that I take making these appointments extremely seriously because I've found that the leaders that we're appointing today are going to be our future leaders tomorrow. So I do a little different approach, and when they come to see me, it's like applying for a job at my business. So to begin with, I'm nominating Cade Nahama. Unfortunately, he's unable to be here tonight. I really wanted to introduce him, but he -- oh, you're back there! Oh, yes, Cade, I couldn't see you all evening. I'm so glad you're here. All right, well, I'm going to have a chance to brag on you a little bit. All right. So Cade, to begin with, he's 11th grader at Bakersfield High School. He earns a 4.2 GPA average, but more importantly, he's a young man of character. And as I interviewed him in my office, I was just blown away by the character that this man, this young man possesses, and I said, "I want to meet your parents because they did one heck of a job." So anyway, I asked him, the first thing that I ask people that are applying is, "How would you describe yourself with three adjectives?" And he thought about it a minute, and then he said, "Problem solver, caring, and driven to do his best work, but not at the expense of others because he cares about other's success as well as himself." That impressed me so much because it's hard to find that today. His history teacher, Mr. Craig Holliday, spoke very highly of him, saying that he is a hard-working, and he appreciated his sense of humor and his humility, a trait that I found also very hard to find these days, and I could see that in him. And then when I asked if he enjoyed history and what he could learn from our country's history, his reply was that it's important to learn it because it repeats itself and it makes history relevant for today. And I really appreciated that because so many are trying to destroy our history today, and we have young men and women that we've thought tonight, this is so fitting tonight with all these others, that we have young men and women that we can depend on in the future. So I also found out that he's an entrepreneur. During COVID, he started an automated resale company and had so much success that he got others started in their own businesses also. That was that caring to make sure that others were successful as well as himself. He's motivated to serve as a commissioner because he sees the lack of involvement of youth in our community. In his words, he wants to promote the importance of helping out Kern County. His future plans are leaning towards the financial or data analytics sectors, and with that, I enthusiastically nominate Cade Nahama for alternate youth commissioner for Ward 6, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor?
You have -- I move that we accept the nominations.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Congratulations, Commissioner Nahama and Commissioner Brar. Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it very much. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7AB for approval. Staff have provided a memorandum for Item 7A, transmitting corrected minutes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. There were no items requested to be polled, so I make a motion to approve Items 7A through 7AB.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Public Hearings Items 8A and 8B for approval.
It's now time for the Consent Calendar Public Hearings. Again, interpreters, make sure, please, that everyone who needs interpretation has the appropriate equipment. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under Consent Calendar Public Hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing items.
Item A, public hearing to consider general plan amendment zone change number 21-0184 on 56.86 acres generally located at the northwest corner of Hosking Avenue and South H Street. Applicant is Majestic Realty Company, representing property owner 4JS &amp; R LLC. Item B, public hearing to consider general plan amendment zone change number 22-0104 on 19.35 acres generally located north of Fairview Road between Monitor Street and South Union Avenue.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A, 8B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that the hearing item be removed from the consent public hearing calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the matter from consent calendar public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to remove?
Good evening. We would like to remove the item from consent calendar for discussion.
Which item is it?
Oh, sorry, 8A.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Does -- for the same item, this is just to remove, it's not to take testimony.
Good afternoon. Correct. I also want it to be removed from the agenda for further discussion.
Thank you. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Calendar Public Hearing? So at this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item 8A will be moved to the regular hearing items portion of the agenda, and Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item 8B is now closed. And at this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item, we will call on Vice Mayor for the motion.
Motion to approve Item B on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the project first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the project. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up, quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing to consider general plan amendment zone change number 21-0184 on 56.86 acres generally located at the northwest corner of Hosking Avenue and South H Street. Applicant is Majestic Realty Company, representing property owner 4JS &amp; R LLC. Correspondence has been provided to the council and public via staff memorandum.
Thank you. And now, staff presentation. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor Kago. Our Planning Director, Paul Johnson, will provide some comments.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. It's my pleasure to present this project. This has become known as the Majestic Gateway Project. It is located in south Bakersfield. More specifically, it is near the Hosking and Highway 99 interchange. The entire site is 91 acres, and it is undeveloped land. To facilitate future industrial and commercial development of this site, the applicant is requesting a zone change from general commercial, planned commercial development, which is C2PCD, to M1 or light industrial, that's on 57 acres approximately, and then commercial from C2PCD to exclusive PCD. And I'll describe what that means here in another couple of slides, and that is on 34 For consistency, they are also requesting a general plan amendment on the industrial portion from general commercial to light industrial. And again, that's with the general plan amendment and not the zone change. The GC designation is consistent with the proposed exclusive PCD zoning. So for the commercial development, this project was analyzed for over 187,000 square feet of retail, food, and entertainment. They did provide some conceptual plans and elevations, but again, those are just conceptual. With the exclusive PCD zoning that's being requested, once those plans are finalized, it'll have to go back through a regular scheduled public hearing with the Planning Commission, who will make a recommendation that will ultimately come to your council for approval. So your council will approve how that commercial is designed in the future. Additionally, it's over a million square foot of distribution, refrigeration, and a portion of office for a warehouse. The proposed M1 zone allows a height of 75 feet, but this warehouse is proposed at a height of 50 feet tall. In compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, an EIR was prepared. And this document identifies ways to minimize adverse environmental impacts through mitigation measures and different project alternatives. Out of the 15 topics that were analyzed, two, which are greenhouse gas emissions and transportation, had a threshold that was considered significant and unavoidable. CEQA therefore requires your council to balance the CEQA therefore requires your council to balance the benefits of the project against those unavoidable impacts. If the project benefits outweigh those impacts, those impacts may be considered acceptable. A net fiscal impact and economic benefit analysis was prepared. And just to highlight two of those, employment and fiscal revenue. Employment through direct, indirect, and induced economic activity is expected to provide just under 2,000 construction jobs. And a full build-out and stabilization would be about double, a little bit more than double that. Fiscal revenue at full build-out and stabilization is approximately 2.2 million annual net revenue to the city. The Planning Commission considered this at the regular scheduled hearing on October 6th. Following staff's presentation, there were nine individuals that spoke in support. One spoke in opposition. During deliberations, the Planning Commission made some changes to some of the aesthetics to soften the aesthetics of the warehouse. They required some additional changes on how far apart that there must be some deviations on the building. They addressed some landscaping issues to require additional landscaping to, again, soften the aesthetic impact. Following those deliberations, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended that your council approve the request. Subsequent to preparing the administrative report that came to your commission, this week we received 13 additional comments. As the city clerk noted, those were provided to you in a blue memo. Out of those 13, one was a neutral comment. One was in support from one of the labor unions. And then we had the remaining 11, which were in opposition. Some of the opposition were emails that were more of a form letter type email, although some of the opposition included a letter, which required a little bit more response. And if there are questions on that, city staff, along with the city's consultant who prepared the EIR, EIR are in the audience who can also answer your questions. With that, that completes my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, item 8A is already open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Emma de la Rosa. I work with Leadership Council. I am providing two comments on behalf of two residents that could not make it tonight. The first comment is by Betty Abney. I live at 840 Hudson Drive. I am 76 years old and I have lived here for 51 years. I'm opposed to the distribution center because traffic will be more congested. I'm also concerned about the health impacts. I feel bad for the folks who live here who have asthma. I also feel bad for the children who are going to be in danger while walking to school. I feel bad for their safety. The second comment is by Eduijes Partida. The streets are already heavily trafficked. It is hard to cross the streets in front of McKee and Golden Valley. I have bad asthma and I am sensitive to the bad air quality. I feel suffocated with the smoke that comes from chimneys, for example. I can't imagine how hard it'll be to breathe with the smoke from the trucks. If the project goes through, there must be mitigation measures to care for the public safety of residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De la Rosa. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Sandra Placencia. Thank you for the opportunity to give comment. I'm a policy advocate with Leadership Council. We are here today to urge you not to approve the general plan amendment zone change number 21-0184 and listen to resident concerns regarding this project. Within the past few months, we have conducted outreach in the surrounding neighborhoods and would like to highlight some of the resident concerns we have heard. In summary, residents are against the zone change and warehouse, but are in favor of the commercial development. As such, if the project were to move forward, we advocate for the no-project alternative, which would allow for the entire site to be used as a commercial center. Regarding resident concerns, one of the biggest concerns is traffic. With 19 schools within a two-mile radius, residents are worried about what the impact of increased traffic will be. Cars are already zooming through Berkshire and Hosking Road. There are no speed bumps, not enough streetlights, or safety measures in place to deal with the influx of traffic in this area. Residents fear that with this new project, things will only get worse. The current mitigation measures only propose street upgrades to the intersections in front of the project. Thus, we ask the city to incorporate high-intensity activated crosswalks, or HOCS systems, at the following intersections. Berkshire Road and H Street, H Street and Hosking Street, Berkshire and Monitor Street, and Hosking Avenue and Monitor Street. And add and incorporate streetlights on Berkshire Road between the intersection of South H Street and Hayden Hill Street. Another resident concern is the increase in air pollution and contaminants. Calenviron Screen explains that this area is in the 89th percentile for pollution burden in the state, with the PM 2.5 being in the 99th percentile, ozone in the 95th, and drinking water in the 99th percentile. With already alarming high rates of contamination that will only increase with this project, residents fear what the health risks await for them in the near future if this project continues as is. The developer is taking pride in being the first net-zero emissions project. However, that does not mean that the emissions will not be produced as a result of the day-to-day operation. As a net-zero project, this merely means that the developer has committed $4 million to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District to mitigate air quality impacts throughout the valley. These funds do not have to be invested into Greenfield and the surrounding communities. The 241.5 tons of NOX, 103.7 tons of VOC ROG, and 130.9 tons of PMT10 emissions will be emitted and breathed by the community daily. And thus, we ask that the city require a mitigation measure that all heavy-duty vehicles entering and operating on the project site be to a zero emission beginning in 2030. Also require tenants to use zero-emission light and medium-duty vehicles as part of the business operations, and create a fund to mitigate impacts on affected residents, schools, places of worship, and other community institutions by retrofitting their property. The current mitigation measures are insufficient to protect resident health and merely encourage behavior without actually requiring any forcible mitigation to occur. Moreover, the city must consider land use practices that may result in unlawful discriminatory effect under the Fair Housing, Fair Employment and Housing Act, which may include the sitting of toxic, polluting, or hazardous land uses in a manner that adversely impacts housing opportunities. Given the area's demographics and the significant adverse impacts this project will likely have on neighborhoods surrounding it, the project at its proposed location is likely to result in unlawful discriminatory effect. Additionally, not considering the alternative locations, which are away from residential use, violates FIA. Placing a warehouse project in the proposed site could also lead to a violation in the city's duty to effeminely further fair housing. Based on the Planning Commission's meeting's comment, the developer is hoping to make this area the new Riverwalk. But we want to highlight that Riverwalk has a park, not a warehouse, built in the mix. Building this warehouse in an area that is in the 89th percentile for poverty would go against FIA and AFFH. Additionally, we want to point out that the Environmental Impact Report identified two sites that are already zoned for industrial use away from residential neighborhoods located right off the freeway. These additional sites are already zoned for industrial use and are a better fit for this type of project. Putting a 1 million-square-foot warehouse in the middle of a primarily residential neighborhood is not equitable or just. We urge the city council to vote no and explore additional sites better equipped for industry. We do not support the commercial development for this site, with some of the mitigation measures we and others have mentioned incorporated. Lastly, we want to clarify that residents are in favor of the commercial portion of this project. They would love to see a shopping center in the neighborhood border against the industry portion of the project. Thus, we urge you to prioritize the community's health and safety and deny staff recommendation to approve the general plan amendment and zone change. Denying staff's recommendation is a vote for a no-project alternative, which would allow for commercial development but no warehouse. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Placencia. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? And for anyone who's standing in the back who's not an officer, I'll ask you to take a seat for fire safety reasons, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Santa Maria, and I am here as a community resident of that area in Ward 7. I am also the Promotora Network Manager with Visión y Compromiso. And I am here to oppose this project, and again, the industrial part of this. Because as you have heard, we have very high asthma rates, not just in the Central Valley, but in that area specifically. We already have a very high traffic of trucks coming into other distribution centers. This does not represent what the community wants and what they have been asking for. We have had youth here asking for a center for them to be able to meet, for a park for them to be able to attend to, for street lighting, and for other things that can be prioritized rather than an industrial warehouse and distribution center. We do not know how long it's going to take for the other things that have been promised. Community has not been involved in this decision enough. There needs to be more done for community input to be had. Nobody has gone and walked into my neighborhood and asked. There was no outreach done, and again, I live in that residence. And if I know about this, it's because through my work, I am being able to be involved. But a lot of the community residents do not know about this. And today, the Day of the Dead, they're also doing their own cultural things and unable to be here today. In the Hispanic culture, we're celebrating the Day of the Dead today. And many of them were unable to be here because of that. So again, I urge you to say no to the industrial development in this area and continue to support the commercial that the community has said they do support, with the park included and with youth activities included. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santa Maria. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Hi, good evening. My name is Ashley de la Rosa. I was privileged enough to be an after-school program facilitator for Horizon Elementary. So I hold that area very close to my heart. You know, I was able to work with third graders who would question why we couldn't go outside to play because of the bad air quality and things that they didn't really understand. Many of my students at a young age of third grade had asthma already. So to even think about a distribution site that would impact 19 schools at a two-mile radius is insane to me. I also want to just highlight that community members don't want to be deceived. Many of them who couldn't be here tonight thought that this proposal was going to be more sort of movie theaters, things that they can, you know, have for their, you know, benefits. But a distribution site is not one of them. So I just want to let you all know that if you consider to approve the general plan amendment and the rezone, we would continue to harm our children, especially our vulnerable communities. As someone who continues to work with the community, I know that health and safety are a family's top priorities, which is why I urge you all to deny the project that will impact the health and safety of Greenfield's residents, the life of the students who walk by through schools, and will be jeopardized with such a project. And I also just want to remind us that 11 months ago, Greenfield Union School District had named the Lone Star. If you remember, there was a car accident on Panama Lane. These areas are really high-traffic already without any really observations or, you know, restrictions. We've already had multiple accidents. And, you know, I don't work with my students anymore, but to think when I would walk them home from after-school and cross them over, they would run across the street because these streets already are unsafe. We have to cut programming at 4:00 p.m. because there's not enough light, and our students cannot walk in the dark. So again, there are other priorities to really invest in the future. And tonight, you heard about the students in the future who want to study for health, who want to make a difference in their community. And by aiding things like this, this is just going to cause more barriers to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De la Rosa. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please come to the mic. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Josh Taylor. I'm a lifelong resident here in Bakersfield. Been a resident of Ward 7 for the past 15 years. And I am the president of Carpenter's Local 743. Projects of this stature do not often make their way to the city of Bakersfield. So when one does, it is imperative that the project be considered for the value that it brings to the area and residents. The Majestic Gateway will create construction jobs with well-paying wages and benefits, employ a local workforce, and be built by contractors who participate in local apprenticeship programs. That is a lot of value being brought, created by one development. As a representative of the local carpenters union with over 1,000 members, I urge the city council to vote in favor of the Majestic Gateway project. And as a lifelong Bakersfield resident, I can't wait to see this development move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Hertz Ramirez, and I live in Bakersfield. I represent over 2,400 labors in the construction industry. On behalf of Launa, Labor's International Union of North America Local 220, we urge the city council to move forward with this project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of this project?
Good evening. My name is Joe Burnett. I'm the business agent for the Ironworkers Local 155 membership, many of whom live here in Bakersfield. As a result, we are in strong support of the Majestic Gateway project. Our skilled and well-trained membership will play an important role in this project. This will put local residents to work and benefit local residents after completion. We may be ordering products online, but products must be warehoused and delivered to customers. This project is a good blend of classic retail and web-based purchases. The ironworkers stand in support of this project. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Anyone else who would like to speak in support of this project? Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Randy Jamara, the landowner. I'm here to represent the family who's owned this property for over 40 years. And first, I just want to say thank you to all of you and your predecessors and everybody who's worked so hard for decades on this project. And in that time, we have had numerous developers that have come from out of town, and they have really sold a lot of hype about what could go on to this property. And it was always envisioned to be about 80 acres of retail development. And it was just constant selling the hype, selling the hype, selling you, selling the family, selling our communities on what is going to go here. All these fantastic tenants from all over the place, you know, the best names in retail. But at the end of the day, it still sits a dirt field with weeds and trash and encampments. And it was appropriate that tonight, the Extra Mile Award was given out to the group that is going around and cleaning all these things up. Our property is one of those properties where it is just constantly like a dumping ground. And our town deserves better. We now have Majestic, who has come in. They have done more in two years than their predecessors did in 10 years each, working on this project. They have been honest. They have been conscientious, working with our local businesses. They've been conscientious, working with our neighbor, Steve Del Papa. I think they've listened very consciously to Chris Parlier, to, you know, the needs of the surrounding neighbors and the greater community. I think that we have a great opportunity in our hand right here, and it would be a shame to let it go by. This is going to be the entrance into our town coming down the 99 freeway. And we now have a developer with the experience nationwide, who does first-class projects, does what they say they're going to do, and is going to deliver a project and jobs for all these hard-working men and women for all of us to be proud of. I really hope that you can show your support with all of us for this project, and we can finally see it come to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jamara. Anyone else in support of the project?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. My name is John Semkin. I'm the executive vice president of Majestic Realty. And I'm here just to deliver the 10 presentation packages in writing that the staff asked us to do. And I even have one on a flash drive if you'd like to see it. I just wanted to thank all of you for the time that each of you have spent with us and giving us an opportunity to talk about the project. The staff has been unbelievable. I mean, unbelievable. And we think that what we do here at Majestic Realty and our foundations, and one of the things, seeing all those kids up there, I almost started crying, you know? It was unbelievable. And those are the things that we're here to help and be... And those are the things that we're here to help and be active participants for. Okay, and so, but we did get a letter today that has a lot of questions. And in the better interest of making sure that this process goes through the way it should, I'm going to ask you, please, for a continuance for two weeks so that we can appropriately respond to that letter in writing and that you close the public hearing. So thank you very much for taking the time to meet with us, and we look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Semkin. Anyone else in support of the project?
Hi, my name is Daniel Socorro, and I'm a labor worker with the Local 220. And this is a great opportunity for me or my coworkers, my brothers and sisters, to be working in this project. I've been driving several miles. I got a car when I start working, traveling outside Bakersfield with 50,000 miles. And right now, my car has 152,000 miles on it, driving out of town. Just imagine every day, driving two hours to work and come back after work, two hours driving back. Right now, we have the opportunity to be working here in town and also the opportunity to have entertainment in my neighborhood. I don't live right here on the neighborhood, but my sister lives right there, Langston and the corner of Claire and Langston Street. And it's just down the street of South Edge and Pacheco Road. So we have a great opportunity not to be driving out of town for 200 miles every day. And just imagine, these people is against the project, they're mentioning the trucks and the cars and the traffic. We already have that and more. Just ask any driver, right now, a truck driver who owns a truck, and what's going to happen? They don't have, they're going to have loads here locally, thanks to the warehouse. They don't have to drive out of town 90 miles to L.A. or 100 miles to Fresno to get a load. That's pollution for free, waste of money, tires, chair and wear. So I'm really glad that you guys support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of the project? Anyone else in support? Seeing none, at this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut in opposition to the project? We have five minutes for this segment. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity. So I want to make sure that we don't forget that the main emphasis of this project is the warehouse, it's the distribution center, it's not the commercial. The distribution center is 1 million-plus square feet. That's what's taking most of the site. If Majestic Realty and Mr. Randy want to support the community and if they want to support the workers that are here that desperately need the work, because let's be honest, we need the work, then they can consider doing the commercial center with the movie theater that they are telling residents about. Residents want the commercial center. The project is a distribution center. That's what they're pushing for right now, okay? Just want to make sure we don't forget about that. And also, how many of us do we want to have our visitors coming into Bakersfield looking at a distribution center? The first thing that they see as they come into Bakersfield is a distribution center. Just wanted to make that point. Lastly, we do agree with, we agreed to continue the extra two weeks, and that would be it. Thank you so much.
And for the record, just say your name again, please.
I apologize, I'm too excited. My name is Emma De La Rosa, and I work with Leadership Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Anyone else wanting to rebut in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to rebut in favor of the project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and
At the request of the applicant and even those that were in opposition, and staff needs time along with applicant to be able to answer some of the questions that were received via mail and tonight, so I make a motion to close the hearing and reschedule for November 16th.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council wishing to speak? Councilmember Gray.
Well, I would say as long as it is, has been and coming, you all are being very gracious to extend the two weeks, ask for the two weeks' extension and address the needs of the questions that are being asked. But I have, I'm a native of Kern County, born and raised here, and it's time that Bakersfield takes on bigger projects that raises to a level that we deserve as a city, the ninth-largest city in the state, to go to that next level. And I think you all have put together a beautiful project that, when it's all said and done, is going to be enjoyed by all. So thank you for wanting to come into Bakersfield, into Kern County with your project.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came and spoke about the particular project tonight. I think there's a tremendous opportunity to bring this particular development to Bakersfield. I think we've seen what the tremendous impacts that we've seen, that we've benefited from with the construction of the Amazon facility just north of the city of Bakersfield, just north of Oildale. And I think this is a good opportunity for us here. I think that there's also an opportunity for us to do it right and make sure that we are being very conscientious of keeping our community safe, make sure that it's walkable. There are a number of particular situations in Ward 1 specifically where we are literally trying to build hawk signals retroactively after most of the community has been built out. So I want to be very cognizant of that. So if I could just ask, I don't know if it's of staff or of the developer, if we could just get some visuals of what it looks like on the ground, you know, on H Street, on Berkshire, so that we can clearly and fully comprehend what it's going to look like from the pedestrian's perspective and the bicyclist's perspective, that would be helpful in the future. I think the other thing, too, is if we could communicate with the local school districts and get an overlay of where those schools are to make sure that there are proper pathways for those students to get to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias.
One more thing I want to add, especially to my carpenter friends out there and the ironworkers and so forth, I'm just really grateful that this company's come into town not bringing in their own labor from other cities and states, but they're giving you all the opportunity, and that says a lot right there. They're a company that cares. So anyway, I want to tell you thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, you have a motion by Councilmember Parlier.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, next item, please. And we'll just wait maybe for a minute. Does nobody want to stay for the rest of our exciting meeting? Thank you, everyone, for doing this so orderly. We appreciate your input, and thank you for clearing the chambers in such a respectful Well, Gary Helen, you're the last standing person. Thank you. Madam Clerk, at the next item, please.
New Business Item 12A, Resolution Setting Dates of Regular City Council Meetings, Department Budget Presentations, and Budget Hearings for January through December 2023.
Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick comments. We learned a few things over the last couple of years in some of our meeting cycles. I'll just point out some of the areas where the calendar's a little bit different next year. We're on second and fourth Wednesdays as opposed to first and thirds. We bump into less holidays and also League of Cities. And then we had a, we typically have some time off in the July-August timeframe, but this year it was a little too wide of a gap between meetings, and so we closed that up a little bit. But otherwise, your calendar looks very similar to former years. The budget workshops are in the same timeframes we've had historically, and I would just recommend council approval on our meeting schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Comments? Seeing none, Vice Mayor.
Move approval of Item 12A.
You have a motion?
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor Statements.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. It's really, this is some statements to the council. I had the opportunity to attend the Urban Land Institute Conference last week in Dallas, and a lot of, a lot of highlights, but one of them that I thought I'd share with you was a lot of presentations on adaptive reuse. And it sort of is a big theme in the country for the coming decade, a lot of reasons I hadn't thought as much about. But we saw examples where people had taken older buildings and done amazing things to them. And what became apparent is, which, if you bring in great architects with an older building, not only you do, you can do creative things on the inside, and we know that. Bitwise would be a great example. Look at the inside of Bitwise. Fantastic. The outside, not so fantastic. But I saw examples of people who take in buildings that much or buildings, you know, 10 times that size and with startling creative architecture on the outside that really didn't cost them, it was just imagination. They made them almost into works of art, where people would come from all over just to see the building because of what they did with the exterior in an artistic way. And I don't just mean murals, I mean architectural features. It was amazing. And it, it, you know, it had the advantages. One of the reasons where we need to look at this everywhere, and I'm specifically thinking more of our downtown area, where you have older buildings that have character, some of them may not structurally stand up, but a lot of them probably do. And it, the infrastructure is in place, your cost actually goes down with many adaptive reuse buildings. And this, of course, they'll be reusing office buildings, malls, all sorts of adaptive reuses going to hit this country as things have changed so much in the way we work, the way we shop. But the carbon footprint is much, much lower in adaptive reuse than starting from scratch. I mean, it's probably 20% the amount of whatever CO2 generation, you know? Cement is one of the biggest CO2 emitters of anything. So we're in a little hard time in this transition if we're not going to use cement anymore in this country. But use a lot less of all of these things, steel, cement, everything, when you're able to take an existing structure and rehab it. And yeah, sometimes you have to add additional, you know, engineering and structural. But the fact that the infrastructure is there and you are going to use a lot less materials, I was astounded seeing the presentations at, not only they revitalized an area with these, but it was because of the great architecture on the outside of the old buildings. Everybody can rehab the inside of a building, but I'd never seen things where, you know, I would drive hours just to see it because they had such, you know, artistry in forms. And it takes really creative people to do this. I hadn't seen this. The best one was a lady who has an architectural firm, I guess she's real famous now. I hadn't heard of her. World famous, who started with her own little shop. And now she's, from all over the world, people bring her in because of what she can do. And it's really just her imagination, you know? So I just want to sort of emphasize that as we especially look at our downtown, if we have other historic buildings, that's great, or reusable buildings, but we have a lot more in our downtown area than any other place. Although warehouses, you can do this with warehouses. We may be doing this with malls someday. I mean, you know how many things have changed, office buildings. But it was really interesting, and it made me think how much we need to consider that as we look at our downtown and what buildings may have a structure. Sometimes they add stories to them. You know, they'll reinforce structurally, and they'll actually add some stories. But the space is there, the streets are there, all that infrastructure is already in place, and it's usually in an infill area. It isn't, you know, the next mile out. So I just wanted to share that, and I think we all want to think about that as we look at our town and especially our downtown area and the older structures that they can be made exciting again. You don't have to start new everywhere. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Two next-year referrals. One with TRIP. I mean, we've done such good work with TRIP, with our freeways, but not so, not so good on the landscaping portion. As you go through 99, West Side Parkway, 58, they don't look too good, and there's really not a plan. I mean, we've talked about it, but there's not a specific plan to really address some of those areas. I know one area through old Ward 7, now Ward 1, between Wilson and Ming Avenue is just horrible on the side of the freeways. And I know Caltrans really doesn't have a plan for it either. So I'd like to refer this to planning and development again next year for them to take a look at these and see if they can come up with something that would be great and fantastic for the city as people traverse our great town. The next one is mosquito abatement. You know, the county vector control purchased a truck, a mosquito abatement truck. I think that's wholly inadequate. We're really talking about the residents of the city of Bakersfield that are just suffering with the mosquito problem. Even with the colder weather coming, these type of mosquitoes don't necessarily, you know, go away either. Not that we want to, you know, get into the county realm, but this is a public safety area. You know, these things carry disease. They don't allow people to enjoy Bakersfield like they have historically, you know, outside. So I want to refer this to safe neighborhoods and take a look at potentially buying a truck or two within public works to be able to mitigate this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We just all, we're at the forefront kind of grand opening, and it was really well, and it was nice to see a project completed, and the city's going to save some money. And in that line, I would like to refer to staff if there is a way or a manner to let the residents and the constituents of Bakersfield enjoy some of the savings and the benefits from that, from that money. It's only $450,000 a year, but if it goes into EOA funds or something like that, to where, it doesn't have to be there, but somewhere to where the residents could actually benefit from those savings, that would, I would like to see that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on Councilmember Freeman's, there's been talk in the past about the Mills Act, and perhaps that would incentivize downtown redevelopment and saving old buildings and stuff. And I think we've looked at it, but it's never really moved forward. So yes, you're going to tell me where that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. We're in the process of completing what's called a cultural resources survey. That's a first step towards having a Mills Act because it identifies what are those historic resources. But we're still following up on a former referral to bring back to council analysis and recommendations about the Mills Act. And so we actually, you know, have looked to a consultant to help develop that cultural resources, you know, inventory. But then the next step will be to come back to council with that information and recommendations on how to move forward with the Mills Act.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. We hosted nearly 1,000 people from all over the state this past week and with the California Economic Summit. And Steph, thank you so much. We couldn't be prouder of our city. We received so many compliments from people who had never been here. We received so many compliments from people who had never been here before, and they were just so surprised positively about Bakersfield. And I know how much hard work went into that. Thank you, just kudos to all of you. Really, really appreciate it. I don't see any other requests to speak. We lost a pillar in our community this past week, David Erner. He was the last surviving founder of the Bakersfield Sister City Project Corporation. He served on the Board of Directors for many years, very active since the inception. And in 1996, he was the first non-Japanese person to be awarded with the City of Wakayama's Cultural Contributions Award. He was a Bakersfield hydriller, and Mr. Erner served as president of Erner's for 70 years. His generosity, his enduring spirit of goodwill, and his contributions to Bakersfield will be missed by all who knew him. And so, tonight, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in honor of David Erner. We're adjourned at 7:06.